You have the agenda before you, but before I get started, I this kind of came together at a very rapid pace, so by the time I got to look at this, I realized that it's a workshop discussion for 2019. I'm a little concerned with the term workshop in this case, so I'd probably like it to be more of a discussion. I mean, I thought symposium or congress were good choices, too. But I think this really is more of a discussion at this point. Workshop has a much more different intonation to me.
It does?
It really does, yeah.
Like?
Workshops are usually planned out in advance with, you know, some advanced indication of what's going on. So that's all I'm saying to you is I'm fine with it being a discussion or something. It's just workshop, just kind of adding odd intonation. So anyways, you have an agenda before you at this point, and I would definitely.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second?
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. Uh, let's see here at this point. All right, so let's get started on things.
Want to move to zoning articles?
Yeah, that's exactly.
No, I'm just asking.
No, 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 that's exactly where we're heading to at this point.
This is in a small conference room, I'm gonna bring my glasses.
Andrew, just the zoning articles themselves.
Oh, for now, my glasses.
I have two glasses.
Now, bifocals?
It's pretty big.
You never know.
This is really big.
So, Mr.
This is, I don't need, that's like magnifying glass.
Okay, well.
No, that's all right, I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I also have them up on the screen.
Oh.
Yep.
Beautiful.
We got a screen again, I think.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I think pretty much for some time, we've been putting out some of our draft articles. We have gotten you the maps. We've scaled back some of our original proposals because, again, we're getting quite a number of articles. And basically, the chart, except for item J, is also being removed, so there's 12 articles that we want to proceed ahead with. And if there's any questions about those, we can certainly talk about it, but, you know, there will be, we want the planning board to sponsor these as part of what we normally do, these advance the master plan. They're part of the, mainly the phase out of the RC2 and RC districts. And if there's any questions about them, great, I mean, otherwise, I think we've started a mailing to the property owners on these.
I have it ready.
Okay, okay, so we haven't mailed it, but we do go through a process to mail out the articles, and then we'll be scheduling a public hearing to get more testimony on these.
Yeah. Okay, good. Just to make you guys aware as well, too, with this discussion that's coming up, that we're gonna have, I really want this to be limited. This really isn't a public, what's the word I want to use? It's really not gonna be a public discussion, per se. I mean, the public's welcome to attend, they love it at this point, but this is something that I view that really should be before the elected members of this board, because there's a lot of stuff for you to consider that's coming up out of this, which may or may not turn into certain things. So I just want to be clear for the rules of engagement, that it really, I really want to keep it focused in on the elected board that's here at the moment, because you are really the ones who are gonna wind up making decisions on this at this point. We'll certainly take public comment in the end, absolutely. But that's pretty much all I want to say at the moment. So, I don't know, Judith, Fritz, you both brought some things in here.
Could I just ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did we want to go backwards, I'm so sorry.
No, I just wanted to follow up on what you said, to ask a question on it. We've seen these various maps several times, it's usually late in the day after we've kind of wiped ourselves out on other things, so.
Yeah.
When you say that, is it, you don't want even the elected board to talk about the specifics here, or to ask questions here, or you'd rather do that later? I just want to understand the consequences.
So, are you talking in regards to what Andrew has brought up at this point?
Yes, the chart and the maps.
I would probably say, because this is really stuff that you're gonna be hearing further about as we get further in, this is, when do we start looking at these, January or so?
He means the public hearings, the residents can come.
Right.
And talk about their neighborhoods.
Right, and that's, and that usually occurs somewhere in about the January, February process.
Right.
With the board discussing this prior.
Right.
Because it's planning board initiative.
Right.
That gets ultimately sponsored by the Board of Selectmen as well, too.
But what I was wondering was whether it's helpful to the staff to know if there are questions among the board now, or if you just want to hold them.
Yeah.
I can understand why you might do it either way, I just wasn't clear which way you want to go.
I guess I'm trying to be a little bit more sensitive to time.
Okay, good, good by me.
And, no, 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 but if you feel as though that you've got like a burning question.
No, I would rather spend time on the other topics, but I just want to be sure I understood what you were telling us.
I think with, you know, and again, I, with the stuff that the two of you are bringing forward at this point, there's kind of a few decision branches that I see happening, is whether you're going to advance certain things as citizen warrant articles.
Right, exactly right.
You want to have the opportunity to bring it to the board.
And to get a reassess.
To see if there's something we want to go on onto at this point, which would give us further latitude.
Sure.
In terms of when to have those discussions.
That's fine, I just wanted to be sure I understood what you were saying.
Yeah, but I know for the planning board sponsored articles, that timeframe brings us a lot further into the year.
Well, and I understand, too, you are being in contact with the property owners, so it's like wide debated until we see what the property owners.
Exactly, there's a wide, generally, go ahead.
Well, I, the timing is important here, too, because we're expected to now go in and talk to the Board of Selectmen about the various articles, so, you know, which is why we started this back in August, you know, we're getting them earlier and earlier because the requests are there. And I think it's important to understand, too, that you're not locked into, just because these are sponsored, you're not like locked into them through the process on the public hearing, you know, and we have done this in the past. We might change direction, we might include some lots, or take some out, or, you know, refer it back to study. So you, I just don't want you to think that you're locked into, you know, just because you've sponsored this group, you have to support them, because you don't at this point, it's still, it's still open. We are confident with them because they have direct relevance to the master plan, we can certainly, if you need some information on that, we can talk about it.
Right, and that make it or break it point, too, is, yeah, really, sometimes centers around the public coming in.
Yep.
At the, you know, this, once we've got all our ducks lined up in a row, it's still the public coming in, and they all of a sudden can change the entire tact of where that article's heading to, and that's happened.
Well, and also, we could have citizen petitions for more map changes that could come in when the petition date comes, so there could be another sum of number that we have to talk about map amendment, it's too great.
Oh, yeah.
So typically, these sort of come in in rounds, if you will, the first grouping, the easy ones that the planning board knows that they're gonna move ahead with, one way or the other, then the citizen petitions, and then any sort of later articles that need more time for development. So we'll advertise for a series of public hearings, usually the first grouping is advertised in late December for an early January date.
That's great, thank you.
So, are we good so far, or do you want to go back to anything? So, I don't really quite know how I want to proceed with both of you, because the thing is, you've got similarities here, and then you branch off.
I think at this point, we have separated.
Yeah, I think, too, like on a topic.
We have separated it out. Okay.
And if, any given topic, it may, like if we're talking swimming pools, if we are both talking, maybe we want to talk about all the ideas about swimming pools at once.
That's kind of what I was hoping would evolve out of it, I just didn't know how the two of you were gonna pose for this, and, you know, how you all saw that kind of flow together.
Yeah, or you go for, I've got swimming pools that differ maybe from you, so go
right ahead.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do that. One very simple one, I'll just pass this around, I just, this was on the list, basically, this is the rear lot subdivision, and at one point, we were dealing with a property, and, well, I understand, the language in the bylaw about rear lot subdivision is, it was a means of creating, of allowing a development of a lot in the rear of a lot, without having to go through a full subdivision plan, meaning a road, which would then become untaxed, but the language of the statute is basically, in all respects, it should be the same. And the one small thing that I noticed is that when we dealt with one property out in the country, and I asked the question, well, from the access road on the back lot, do we exclude that from the size of a lot for purposes of coverage, and the answer was no. And so my proposal would simply be that the access road going back, or to, back to the lot, should be excluded from the lot area for lot size. The same that it would be if it were actually a road. I don't know whether that's.
No, I don't get what you mean, it's still not, it's still, okay, not a real road, but you want that area, we have to determine.
If it's an easement that goes back, and it covers 10,000, and it covers 3,000 square feet, and the lot, and the total lot is X, it'll be X less 3,000 for purposes of determining whether or not that's a maintenance.
And how do we, so the first question would be, we would have to determine what the width is for that particular project, it could be 16 feet, it could be 14 feet, it could be 20 feet.
It could be, presumably, it's an easement.
Right.
So easement's gonna have a dimension.
Okay, so, I just need for clarification, so, the, when you say access road, you're talking about the common, area of the common driveway?
Yes.
Not the pre-plan, because when the pre-plan is shown, there is a theoretical road there with a certain area.
Yeah.
So you're not talking about that.
I'm not sure what the distinction you're making. What I remember is, it was a lot, and I don't remember whether it was out in Cathcart, or, it was out somewhere near Shimmel. And basically, there were two lots, and they were both 40,000 square feet, or 20,000 square feet, right? There was a road going through the first lot around to the back lot.
Right.
Right? If that had been a subdivision, and that was actually a road, the area of that road would have been excluded from the front lot for purposes of the lot size.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
My point is simply, that, in that particular case, it went through the lot, had you excluded the area that was devoted to the road to get to the back lot, the first lot would not have qualified.
Got it.
So when you say exclude, do you mean include?
No, you would exclude it, in other words, if lot A is 20,000 square feet, and the road going through it to the back lot is 3,000, it's only 17,000 foot lot. And if it's a 20,000 square foot requirement, then. So, how's that affect the calculations that we're using for this, because that's probably what I'm a little trifled about.
I know what you're trying to say, you want me to explain it, I'm gonna figure that out already.
All I'm hearing from the proposition that, with respect to the rear lot legislation, it should be exactly the same as, the effect should be exactly the same as if you had built a subdivision with a road. And I'm simply pointing out, there's an anomaly here, because we aren't, we're, in effect, by doing that, it would allow you to build, have a lot that you would not otherwise be able to have if it were actually a subdivision. How you calculate it is detailed.
Mr. Chairman, I, the one thing I think that's confusing about this, how this, how you proposed this, is that it's not unique to the rear lot subdivision, it was unique to that particular property. So, yeah, I think that the issue is where, it's really where a road counts for frontage, that that area should be deducted from the lot. Because they were proposing an A and R, they was, so it was not just a rear lot subdivision, they were then coming in with an A and R where the area of the road was included within the lot, because it was included within the title. And in that case, it was a pre-existing, it was a pre-existing road that already was laid out.
50 feet.
So I think it's, I think if the board, I think it's more of an issue where it's, it really goes to the ground cover ratio where you want an exclusion if any portion of the lot contains the road for frontage, I think.
Maybe, you'd, we'd have to talk about it in great deal, I don't want to spend a lot of time.
Okay.
It's just simply something, and I know I was going through it, seemed to be an anomaly, and in one particular case, seemed to make a difference to me as to whether or not that could be approved or not. Right?
Yeah.
So I, you understand my concept?
I do.
I don't even, I'm not even sure whether this is a change, or whether it's simply the interpretation.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a change to clarify when those situations occur, and there are some instances, mainly on land court property, property mainly in the country areas where it comes up.
Okay.
But it's not just connected with the rear lot subdivision, it's really a universal principle, and it's not uncommon.
Okay, why don't we just, I think that's enough discussion, you understand what the issue I'm raising, and it's relatively technical, it's not something that is earth shattering. Swimming pools, as a general topic.
No, no, can we hear from now?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I think he's good with that.
I mean, the Brewster Road thing, though, if they had a lot of money, they could've came in with an A and R and gone to court, and probably would've won. They were trying to save them trees, that lady, what's her name, Mimi, or what, Mrs. Copeland, the.
Is that the one, Brewster Road?
Yes, it's the one you're talking about. That was unique, because it didn't have any extra dirt. For a road 40 feet, it would not have been enough land to subdivide it.
Yeah.
I think what you're trying to say, I would eliminate the Brewster Road as even a comparison, because it was even, it was a strange situation. They could've plowed them trees down, and made, if they didn't want to upset the world, but technically, they legally probably could have got A and R, because that road.
Because that was an existing lane?
Clearly laid out, aerials, yep.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying, if they didn't want to do that, okay, so, but I think what you're saying is that the, like, let's say it's 20 feet, the easement for a rear lot subdivision.
Yeah.
After they come in with the 40-foot proof plan, which under a regular subdivision, they have, you have to have a lot of extra land to do a regular A and R or the rear lot. You have to have extra land, or it won't work.
Yeah.
I think Brewster proved that in a kind of a different way. You're saying you would like to see the 20-feet easement road in the final plan be removed from ground cover as if it was a road like a 40.
Right.
That's what he's saying.
So.
Ooh, sorry.
This is a prime example of one that you all saw in the meeting.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't, you would want to have that as a separate road?
No, he was saying, he doesn't want it to allow it, and I'm not even saying that it does, because I don't, the staff needs to kind of answer that, but does that road that ends up being an easement driveway, does that count as part of the lots? Does it give them more ground cover?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I think his Fritz is trying to say.
That's what I'm.
He wants to remove that.
That's the concept I'm getting at.
He wants to remove that, whatever square footage it gives them a little more, whether what a zoning district is, I think that's what he's saying.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just, I came into it after it was approved by town meeting, but wasn't that the intention of the planning board, wanting to go this route, so that way that land that would be for the roadways actually still on the books?
Yes. On the books is different from ground cover calculation. Is there a way to separate it?
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, so this is where we get into the technical.
We're in two different areas here, and again, this is why it's not directly connected to the rear lot subdivision. It's connected to the fact that normally, road areas, road areas, do not count for ground cover. So, in the case of Brewster, what was providing frontage, the entire area of that, it wasn't backed out of that, of that total. So the road area was an easement over the land, and if you backed out, if you deducted the easement of the road, not, not just a common driveway here, then, then the lot calculations would have changed, and that lot would not be eligible without additional land.
That's what struck me, is that we were looking at that.
Right, so that, that's entirely different than the rear lot subdivision, because what you would, what you're talking about there is deducting an area out of the common driveway from the ground cover. And if you want to do that, you should either, you can do that under your own regulations, or, you know, again, if that was an A and R, there would be no deduction, so, and I don't, I think you should just be careful to not put disincentives to do common driveways, that's what we want to encourage.
Would it be easier just to create a third lot, call the driveway a lot, don't we do some subdivisions also?
We can.
I'm just saying, that would eliminate, because if you do have to be legal square footage for each of the lots, the driveway easement, or whatever roadway that you want to say, is already going to be put forth, and then you can take that out by making it lot number three with common rights.
The problem with that, John, is that, again, the intent of the, of changing the bylaw was that all the land is subject to taxation, so backing out a common driveway lot is the same as backing out a road lot. So I, I don't, I mean, you know, again, you all can review that when you issue the special permit, if that's something you want to pursue, but there, these are two different concepts.
I don't think it's going to affect that many, it's going to be a handful.
But, I mean, I remember some of the chief reasons why we did this was to prevent, to prevent three driveways popping up on a common roadway, to internally, just basically one curve, one cut into the roadway, everything takes its parking and everything else internally off that one roadway. And the other thing was that, if it did go A and R, you're looking at 40-foot layout at this point, this allows us a lot more, right, this allows us a lot more creativity in the process. So, because I remember sitting on this board, and every time, something else with these things coming up, was like, the paving kings of the world here. So, to me, that was kind of an attractive thing, to where we could minimize that roadway down to what we felt was appropriate, especially for that rear lot. So I saw more advantages to that in terms, in terms of being able to do some things, and.
And the other thing.
But, just not, let me ask the question, so, when, and I'll use rear lot, because that's where the language comes up, that I was focusing on, which basically was, the rear lot subdivision allows us to create, somebody to, to, to develop a lot in the back of another lot, without having to go through the full subdivision process.
Right.
Right?
But they gotta get four votes. It's a special component. An A and R is a lot easier to get, in some of the cases, Fritz, too, and they're giving up something else to get that.
Okay, I'm just starting from the simple point of, when it led, when it was passed, you simply said that if, if there's a road that goes, I'm sorry, the other way around, if the road is this way, and it goes through this lot to get back to that lot, that if that were a subdivision, and that were a road, that area would not be included in that lot.
Right.
Yes.
Correct, okay?
Yeah.
The language says, when you talk, when it talks about rear lot, and maybe it's other areas as well, says, the intention is simply that all other things will be the same, the only difference is, we're creating, we're doing this so this won't be an untaxed piece of property. All other things will be the same. And so my point would be, is, and to me, it would be just the interpretation, that if all of the things are gonna be the same, the amount devoted to get back to there should be excluded from that lot.
Okay, so what.
That's all I'm trying to, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
So what that involves is a calculation of the road area on the proof plan, and a deduction of that amount from, which you can put in your special permit decision. That's, that's what that is.
Okay.
So.
And I, like I say, I didn't, I remember when I, when it came up, I asked the question, is that excluded? The answer was no.
Right.
And it's just maybe because it hadn't been, or whatever, and I just, at the time, it seemed to me that that was sort of inconsistent with what it is. Now, in the case of where the one piece of development, those happened to be, I don't remember what they were, 20,001 and 20,002 lots, I mean, so it would have made a difference, I guess.
Yeah.
That's the only point I'm trying to make.
Got it.
So, take it for whatever it's worth, and.
Okay.
Go from there.
I could ask a question, but so, oh, sorry, I wasn't even looking.
Thank you, I really appreciate kind of saying, Mr. Chairman, or if you need my attention, so just chime in. But go ahead.
Well, it's just, in this discussion, and I'm looking at this picture up here, of Buffalo Hills, so, is that entryway have essentially divided down the middle, and the land goes to each, so they're 10,000 square feet, does that include half that road? I'm just trying, it's just clarification on that.
That is all one lot?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so lot B1 is outlined by the dark line, right?
This is B1?
Yep, so that's 10,000, and it doesn't have a dotted line down the middle, I was getting a little confused on this deduction, dah 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 thing, so I just needed a little clarification.
She's just showing us a somewhat of a simpler version.
Well, right, but sorry about it, to be able to explain this one, I might have been talking.
Mr. Chairman, can I just get some clarity on this? So, Andrew, I think what you're, just for future reference, what you're saying is that if it came in with a proof plan, you would take the square footage of the roadway, based on whatever regulation would need to be worked out, and you would apply that as a deduction in some, some way, either through bargaining with the applicant or a set formula, to take away from the overall ground cover that the lots could be. That we wouldn't be able to use the definition of road and frontage here, because really what you're seeing there, that is being called a road, is an easement, which is a common driveway.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand for a future reference when we're looking at this, because it's, there are some complexities to it, and.
Yeah. And this, to me, is different than the case I raised. In the case I raised, you were basically giving both properties the full, I mean, you, 40,000 square feet, you divided it into 20 and 20, and yet you said, there's a road going through one of the, the first property to get to the second, that's the only point that I make.
Mr. Chairman, I think, two things, this is probably not the best example, if my memory serves you correctly, this was presented with a circular access that showed all the frontage, and what we deemed was, it was better to have this plan than what they had with triangular lots, three of them coming off a circular plan. So I don't know if this is, I agree, this is not the best, but I do recall one on Cliff Road, I think it was 154 Cliff Road, Barrett, it was a long driveway with a back lot, and I think it was a couple of acres, and that was your rear lot subdivision, where I think, I get it, you take that access with the road, you, as long as you still have the square footage to meet the code, or the zoning for those two lots, you would remove the roadway from square footage, and as Stephen would say, it's just a mathematical equation that you just deduct from, and if, as long as you deducted that square footage and still met the requirement for the lots, then it would be okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Thank you. Just clarifying.
I'm ready to move on. All right, no, that's fine, so go ahead. Okay, so, moving on? Yes, please. Okay, so, what's in the package, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna hand, I've revised a little bit, so it's more specific, and it boils down to just what I want to talk about tonight, which is swimming pools. And, so, if you take a look at the package, and there are a few photos attached to it, I'll simply make these comments. The material that Leslie, I think, included in the package, shows that there are approximate, there's enough for them, I think there's enough for everybody.
Potion.
To see.
Yeah.
There are presently about 800 swimming pools, I think Leslie, according to Leslie, as the attachment, the first attach, second attachment, just on October the 16th, the HDC approved six pools in one night. There are no, at the present time, no Department of Health regulations relating to swimming pools, they are discussing them, but the issue of how the water gets dumped, where it gets dumped, where they're built, is there any, is there any effect on the groundwater? That, at the present time, there are no regulations. For me, this is, in town, this, the swimming pools raise, and I will say, the proliferation of swimming pools raises two issues, one's density, so if you look at a couple of One's density. So if you look at a couple of the pictures that are in there, that I have in the package, and there are more here, if you want to take a look at some more.
See a lot of these.
It just covers up ground cover, more of the ground cover, and less regular space that you would, you would normally have. The second thing, which I think in town is as important, and that is the nuisance, the noise and light nuisance. And if you look at, I'll point a couple of that, that was actually a spa.
Yeah, no, I see that.
Yeah. So, if you look at one of the ones that I put in the package, it's right along the fence line. It's probably a five-foot, ten-foot setback, and there's a house right on the other side. Would you like to live in an R1 zone with a swimming pool and lights and, not only underwater lights, but backyard patio lights until whatever time of night that kids or people are swimming or partying or whatever? And I've had a couple of anecdotal things, people talking about friends, or neighbors who have swimming pools, and the complaints that go on. So it's density and proximity to neighbors in, especially in town. So, let's just go through these. Right now, as I understand it, you're looking at the use chart. Pools are allowed as an accessory use in everywhere except for Historic District or CI, where they're not allowed. They are allowed in VR, Village Residential and MMD by special permit from the ZBA with a special twenty-foot setback, as I read it. The, what I am proposing is that no pools would be permitted in all of the town residential districts. So that's basically all of the R1 through R40. I went around today looking, there are numerous, most of the pictures that are being circulated are very close to town. You can see the streets. Most of them are R1s, very, very close to old historic district areas in town. And so I would propose several things. One, that the pool would have to be clear line of sight from the principal dwelling for safety purposes, appropriate screening, screening and safeguards regarding noise and light nuisance to neighbors, so that there would be factors, so that the ZBA, if issuing a special permit, would have the right and the obligation to take into account neighbors' objections based upon noise and light. More significantly, I think, and from our point, from the zoning point of view, pool would be excluded for lot coverage, or would be included for lot coverage calculation. So if that's a twenty-by-forty pool, that'd be eight hundred feet of, is that eight hundred? Yeah, eight hundred square feet of a building, in effect. So, there may be a situation where if they're looking to see how much they could put on a piece of property, they may be deciding whether they want a bedroom or whether they want a swimming pool. The third would be, the setback in all districts would be at least thirty feet, and the reason for that is regardless of the size of the lot, if there's a neighbor, the nuisance factor is the same. Noise travels the same distance. So if it's in a smaller lot, if it's a, just because it's a smaller lot doesn't mean the pool should be set back farther from the, from this, from the, from the, from the neighbor's lot, assuming there is a, a neighbor. And finally, no special permits would be issued until the Board of Health adopts a bylaw or rules, and they're trying at this point, as I understand it, to figure out which they have to be regarding proper health standards for use and maintenance of swimming pools. Spas would be subject to the same regulation. Why do I say a spa is defined as something that's over twenty-four inches deep and more than a hundred and fifty square feet, or more than a hundred, or a thousand gallons? If you look at the pictures that I sent around, I don't know where they are at this point.
They're coming.
You'll see one in there, there is a spa. That spa is at the, that picture was actually taken from the parking lot of Academy Hill. And you look at that, and what, you know, what, so that's permitted in all districts. What's the significance difference in terms of noise, light from a spa and a small swimming pool? And a lot of the swimming pools that are in town are pretty small. Yeah, whatever. This, yeah, that's the.
That's the one.
That's the spa. And the point of the pictures is simply to show you that some of this, one, for instance, on Barnumus Lane, take home, takes up, there is no backyard. That's the driveway, the pool house, the main house, and the swimming pool that is right outside the steps of the house. So, the other one, the question I just have, and maybe, Andrew, you can, that, that, the pool at one thirty-one Maines in the old historic district, did that get built before?
That was R1 at first.
Yeah, unfortunately, Main Street was half and half. So one side of Main Street was ROH, one side was R1. We moved to change that to both sides being ROH, and they were able to grandfather themselves in.
That one picture.
But, yeah. So the zoning map that, so maybe that's the explanation. The zoning map that we got just recently shows that now as being ROH. But it was not before that, the right side of the, the north side of Main, upper Main Street was, was not ROH?
That was R1.
Okay, so that explains how I got it.
That's the Craig House, I believe.
Right, and that's something.
The one in Dupont, I think.
Those are one.
Some people may want to see those.
Yeah. So, I'll stop there. Again, some of this has to do with, almost all of the properties, the pictures that you see are new houses, spec houses. These are not owners, yeah, these are not owners who built a house, own a house, and decided they wanted to build a swimming pool. These are all houses where basically the developer built the swimming pool. And some part of this would be, we have, we, we talk about cars and traffic, and for every one of the new houses that's built, there are two or two and a half cars parked in the driveway. They're on the road in the summertime. And maybe reducing the ability to have swimming pools, the attractiveness will, some, will diminish in some way, the building of spec summer homes.
Mr. Chairman.
So, can I piggyback?
Yeah, I was hoping you would, actually.
I'm done.
My rationale, I agree with a lot of what Fritz said, but I have slightly different reasoning why this concerns me and slightly different solutions. The two things that really strike me about it, one is having a lot of swimming pool water going into the sewage line is over stressing the sewer, the more we do that, the more we're stressing or taking capacity in the sewer lines that is need for other things, and if they're being discharged into septic fields, then that's taxing those septic fields, so it concerns me on the health front, especially with issues about saltwater pools versus regular chlorine pools. So that's one thing. The other is, by seeing these kind of estate buildouts fully, the way that Fritz was describing it, I think we're taking lots that are smaller lots in the town area, and they're not as available for affordable housing, because they're being built out in a way that you're getting all these kind of amenities and everything like that, because there's financial desire by investors to try to do that. So, that's what's driving my concern, just to start with that. So, the two things that seem to me, ways to do it, would be to count swimming pools as part of the ground cover, as Fritz said, I think, so we both agree on that. Alternatively, or also to limit the places, the districts that were still located. I've talked to various people, and there's some other ideas that some of the towns in Martha's Vineyard have come up with, including things like, don't allow them to be built unless it's two years after the original house is built, so it's not part of this initial package, that it's like, get to know the community, find out there's an ocean out there, you could swim in, you may not need this. The idea of a moratorium, as Fritz said, about taking time to study it on the part of the Health Board is not a bad idea, but the thing that seems to me is that I part company, I think, to some of Ruth Fritz, is going through a permitting process on this. It seems to me it's cleaner, less expensive for everybody, less hassle to try to let them be sure they know and take them through a review protocol, when in my mind, there's reason to prohibit, to include in the ground cover, so we're not getting this upper built dimension, and to instead decide where they should be. I talked to Roberto Santa Maria last week, and he said, in addition, that he thought it would be very useful to have a requirement that people notify the health departments, they're gonna drain the pools so that they can keep an eye on where the wastewater is going to go, and that you could have a five-dollar fee or something like that, just to keep track of where that's going on. But that, there's really a risk, that he was describing the differences between chlorinated water and salt, the salt water, that it can affect the vegetation, especially saltwater, as far as I, I had heard, that I asked him to explain it to me, that, that could, because of the chlorine will bond to certain other things in the soil, but the saltwater may not do that, that I think that's an added feature that I think would be worthwhile. So, I guess the difference between Fritz and me would mostly be, should we be using a permit protocol on this? Otherwise, it seems to me, we agree on, should be counted as part of the ground cover, and that we should think about where is appropriate, and so that's kind of a brief summary. So I'd be curious what others think about that.
The one thing that comes to mind, I think we have to, if we're looking at pools and things, I think it would be interesting when developers come with large developments to maybe consider one pool. Because you're eliminating the need to have maybe thirty lots where everybody has the individual, individual right to have a pool. And, and there has been a couple of developments that have come before us, and it wasn't necessarily met with an agreement that it should happen. So, that's just something that we should consider, too.
Well, you might be able to call that, like, community pool, or, you know, something that's.
And there was one on Hawthorne Park, that they have a community pool for, I think, thirteen houses, and that reduces, you know, for all the health concerns and the discharge of the pool, so. So that's just something to consider for future development. You have anything? His hand hurts, right?
Okay, so I won't say everything now, it'll be other people chiming in, I'm sure, but. I started working at Yates in nineteen eighty-seven. There was about ten pools in the island. Now there's about eight hundred. It used to be for the wealthy. There's a lot of locals put pools in. Lots of them. If you don't have to drive to the beach, make traffic. Used to be about.
You could take your bike.
Used to be about doing your business at the beach. We used to, there was more complaints.
Well, maybe there's more that was spots authorized, you never know.
When I got started in town stuff was before the two thousands, with the beach committees and banning beach driving, too many cars on the beach.
Your wild use, huh?
A lot of crazy stuff used to go on. So I see pools as a natural progression in the amenity stuff. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not trying to say that there's not other things, but everybody's got fancy stuff, and they have fire pits. Very annoying, a lot of light, there's no way to control fire pits, yet. Okay? I'm not saying, I'm proposing it, but every single house has a fire pit. Now, okay, and what do they do? Create noise, people all gather around them, making, is same amount of noise as a pool, if not more, depending upon the people.
Yep.
The other issue, when you look at these, there's a pool on, in Scottsette, on McKinley on the left, that's in the middle of this square, tight little house. They have an underground car garage, two of them, elevator, by the way, it's absolutely incredible. It's like Fort Knox, this house. But I see the way that pools have been sort of architecturally plugged in to these smaller lots in a way we came to see them. The houses are smaller and lower, and screening the pool now. I mean, that's just how they're building them, okay? So in my opinion, whether it's the HDC causing it, I think architectural gets very fluffy now, and it's just like the pools, it was mostly the same as a saltwater pool. And some of these rock pools, there's one out in, I can't think of where it is. I know my brain won't tell me, but I know where it is. It's, it's incredible. It looks like something Larry Cronin built for people, and not fish. It's incredible. But, I mean, we've made a move in ROH, right, Andrew? Did we ban them in SOH, too?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't, I couldn't remember that. We've got special permit in Smattucket. Oh, is it just the VR?
VR has a.
VR.
Because I know we got VR in Smattucket, okay. Ground cover? Here's my issue with the ground cover issue. In the big lot, you know, in LUG one, two, and three, there's already very little ground cover already. To tell someone with LUG three that they have to pick ground cover with a pool when they got a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of property that they can't do anything with?
This wouldn't do that. Just to be clear, it would say you have to count it as part of the ground cover. But if you've got enough space, then it's part of your calculation of what is covered with ground cover.
Yeah, but you're saying you want an LUG one, two, and three lot for the pool to count as ground cover?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm saying there isn't enough ground cover. There's already a limited amount in those gigantic lots. So you're removing.
Yeah, but isn't there plenty of other space? I'm, I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
You're eliminating, I mean, if you include a pool as ground cover, and LUG three is three percent, so you can only, there's ninety-seven percent of a three-acre lot you can't use for a structure, some type of building. So if you can't use it for a pool either, I mean, if the, if a pool counts to, is part of the three percent, you're eliminating building on a three-acre lot that, I mean, would be challenged in court.
How big is the house gonna be? In other words, well, you got three percent of, of how many square feet?
Of a hundred and twenty.
That's thirty-six hundred square feet.
Right. What I'm saying is that's a big piece of land to be restricting that much more. There's a lot, there's not very much you can do on, on a three-acre lot.
Thirty, thirty-six hundred square feet of ground cover? Yeah, I think it's a pretty big house.
Well, they, that's right, but it's also a gigantic piece of property. I mean, I'm just saying, I think.
I think we just disagree on that.
No, that's fine. We can disagree on anything you want to disagree on. I just think that, I think that this is, this should have been done twenty-five years ago before locals figured out they didn't want to go to the beach, and then figured out that you can rent your house for more, and locals putting in pools now and rent them. On my street.
Not one of those pictures that I passed around was a local.
I'm just, but the locals would be affected by this, correct?
Right.
Everybody would.
Everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Can I give you an example?
Excuse me, I'm really trying to leave it focused into the board right now, thank you, because they're really the ones who are gonna make that determination. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, I mean, it used to be sprinkles system, we tried to control outside air conditioners. Had been a hot topic, trying to eliminate, because they make noise. Every one of these houses has, has an air conditioner running. It can be a lot louder than. A lot of the pool equipment now is inside, because they fixed some of that with the way they would calculate and ground cover on the little sheds. Thank God, that got fixed, because that's ridiculous, having that stuff outside. So that's one improvement for noise, which you're, you brought up. Canterbury Lane, good example, I think John might have been thinking about that, but didn't think of which place he was mentioning. And they brought that up without hearing it, you guys were all at. All those property owners that didn't want that one pool, every one of those lots can have a pool, and they didn't care. As long as they didn't have that community one, which I thought was interesting. That, that tells me that people don't mind other, their neighbor having a pool, in, in my mind. neighbor having a pool, in my mind, when they knew that if they had that community pool on that side of the road, all those lots that Ronnie Bamba's been talking about, they, they wouldn't have been able to build a pool. They were going to restrict those lots. Those neighbors didn't want the restriction on all those lots to have a pool. I thought that was an eye-opening hearing.
I thought that was, pardon me, if it's in order, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm done now.
I thought that was about having a membership kind of organization to have like another Westmore Club.
It was, but it was at the same time, it was, they were going to restrict those houses to have a pool, to have that community pool on the, on the west side, Canterbury.
Well, I think there were a number of issues going on there. Mr. Chair, do you have comments? I'd be curious what you have.
I do, as a matter of fact, but I'm going to yield a staff permit.
Mr. Chairman, I just, there's, there's a couple of things. I don't want to stop your discussion, but the, the issue tonight is whether or not the planning board is going to sponsor the articles or not. And there's still opportunity to bring forward citizen articles during this time period. So, and I, you know, the bylaw does say that at least now, that a community pool is considered a residential pool. So we would have to make some changes if you want to still allow a community pool. So again, and there's time to develop that, but I think, I think you're getting into testimony that you would normally hear at a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I just want to keep you on track here because...
Thank you.
These can be some long discussions, I think.
Right.
And, and we will have time to develop them. And I mean, we as staff need to know, I mean, I need to know from, from what you said, at least the first, what's not really numbered here is that basically you would change the accessory to no in all the town districts. Is that right?
Yeah.
And would that include the commercial, where it's allowed in the commercial districts as well?
I didn't get much thought of it because I didn't really understand what the purpose of having it in the, what the, what the effect of it is.
Okay. Because in, Mr. Chairman, do you want us...
Yeah.
So in the commercial districts, for example, there's, some of those allow residential type applications. So CTEC, for example, allows a single-family home and commercial buildings. So, but you know, that's a 10,000 square foot lot. So again, I'm just, if you're getting at density and reducing ground cover, it seems like you...
What I tried to do is really, for the purposes of this meeting, I wanted to brush it out as much as I could, rather than just throw out a general idea. And then, so I wanted to come forth with this, with a proposal that was as specific as I could get.
Yep.
And so I just simply, I somewhat arbitrarily chose between residential district, districts and, because those are smaller, in town, most of the complaints that I've heard are the pools that are in the R1 district, right on the outside of the perimeter of the, of the old historic. And so that's what I was focusing on. And then I tried to take the country areas and basically try to deal with those through the special permit process. I don't care as much if it's a very big lot. I don't think you're going to have as much nuisance issue, but for consistency, I think, again, it's a question of the McMansion maxing out the coverage with pools, secondary, tertiary, tennis court, everything else, when I don't think it would be unreasonable to say, if the people in town have to include it as a part of their coverage, then you should too. And if that means you've got to take 1,000 feet out of your 3,600 square foot house, then you make the decision as to what you want.
Right. So the, so the, the ground cover calculation is universal. That, that goes to the absolute definition everywhere.
Right.
Okay. And then the, the, removing them from the town residential districts...
I was just trying to make a simple way of...
Right.
Doing it. If there's a good argument as to why, where those, some of those areas are and they're not as susceptible. In other words, if you told me, if we said, oh no, well, those R40 lots are only in this particular area and they're really like more country, then maybe there's a reason to have them be special permit and not altogether. But generally speaking.
So at this stage, again, if it's better to do more expansive and then cut it back as the board has the public hearing, because you can't add districts after the fact. So again, just, you know, what, what are the town commercial districts include residential aspects and they border some residential areas? So I, I guess what I'm hearing is that probably the same principle would go to those areas, at least RC and RC2, for drafting purposes here. The, and then the moratorium issue. So the moratorium is tied to the Board of Health action. So no special permits now until the Board of Health? Is that, is that what the idea is?
That's what I was getting at. I'm hoping that actually that may be a restriction that doesn't make any difference because by the time this would pass, I'm hoping that the Board of Health is actually going to have...
Have them by the time.
Promulgated whatever they are. I mean, they're, they're in the discussions of it and, and as a matter of fact, talking to the town as to whether or not it needs, it can be a rule or it has to be a bylaw or exactly what they do implement it. I just wanted to throw it in there as something, but again, it may be moved by the time this ever got implemented.
Okay, thank you.
So I, you know, this one, I would probably say I'd prefer to keep this off of the board's radar at the moment and not support it from a board standard. And I'll give you a few good reasons why. I think there's a lot of subjective data floating around at the moment, which kind of concerns me. I mean, I would love to get a better read from both, even like an Ed Pesci on the effect of pools being drained out into septic. And I don't think they're draining them into septic. I think they're, they drain these things directly onto the ground and it probably does get somewhere into the septic. Same thing with the salt. If they're draining it directly into the sewer system, I would love to hear from David Gray and begin to have him begin to work out what those dynamics are. I have concerns with things like the lighting and the noise thing because again, those are highly subjective things that there's no clear standards for. And I'm not sure how you'd be, excuse me, I'm not sure how you'd begin to monitor that. So I have those levels of concerns. I think I would want to go out, like we did beforehand, and put out a survey to people to see what their thoughts are on this process and get a little bit more concrete feedback on this. And that will include spas too, which I'm going to cover in a few moments. I think even when we look at lot coverage, if, if there's no adverse effect from the pool water itself going into things, that's going to make me rethink what that coverage calculation is that you're looking at. If you really don't want to do this, I mean, even in LUG 1, I think you're going to be hard pressed with, with 30-foot setbacks to accomplish it in LUG 1. So I mean, if it's boiling down to you want pools, great. If you don't want pools, then pull the plug on everything. I, I really would like to back down a bit at this point. And now even with the spas as well too. Spas to me aren't necessarily as egregious, I don't think, as would be a pool in terms of the dynamics of it. As Nat said, I think spas give people an opportunity to be able to relax in the comfort of their own home without venturing out. And I would like to get some more concrete feedback from the public on that. And that's where I see a survey coming back into place again. You know, I'm hearing pieces come in about what the HTC considers at this point, what the Board of Health considers. Those are all valid things, but again, I like more concrete data on it. If it's a thing about keeping historic integrity, then I think the HTC should lead that charge. That should be within their purview then. If the effect is, is something that's going to be either dealing with groundwater, if it's going to be dealing with septic, if it's going to be dealing with sewer, again, those things I think need to come out of either Board of Health regulations or something else. It's a start, but I don't think it's ready for primetime yet. You know, if nothing else, I think the opportunity, if you want to move forward with doing this as, as a citizens' warrant article, so be it. But I'd like, I'd like to back down personally a little bit and get some, you know, because my thing would be to get more concrete data in and then be able to do that before. And that actually worked well for us when we did our last pool survey as well too, to try to figure out what was going on. So if you remember.
Mr. Chairman, we did do a survey of the ROH, SOH district, which was strongly in favor of, of removing them in those, in those areas.
Right. You know, and I think it gives, it gives the general public an opportunity to weigh in here, you know, not just outside a town meeting, but on a slightly bigger scale. So, I mean, I hear some of your points, but if the concerns are boiling down into density, gentrification, those kind of things, then I'd just say, cut the legs out from underneath it in its totality with those reasons behind it. If these, if these are, I'm just saying, because I see some of that in here. If it's, if it's a concept of, okay, again, I'd like more feedback.
Sorry, you're proposing of just not allowing swimming pools at all?
I'm saying that's, that certainly would be an option. That, that would be straightforward and direct, you know, for that. You know, if your concern is they're going to be overbuilt at this point, certainly you could put a moratorium in place, but you usually need to have reasons behind the moratorium. Instead, put a sunset date behind it. So I'm not sure what directions these would begin to take. You know, and again too, we're, I, I'm not sure I'm ready to take on more special permits for this board.
It wouldn't be us, it would be the zone.
Yeah, I, then, but zoning, excuse me, zoning board and special permits?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there would be, that would fall, that could fall under their purview stuff.
That's two issues now.
All right.
I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm done. That's, that's my take.
I was just going to say, before we put it to aside, I was just going to invite John if he has further thoughts, because he may, he may not want to speak to it, but...
No, I don't, I don't mind. I've just been trying to write down a couple of concerns. I think right now, I, I think there's some really good things, points being made, especially what really concerns me is the, you know, the winterizing of the pools and getting rid and draining and taxing, if you will, our sewer and septic. So those things I'd like to work on and see how we can regulate. I am concerned with the, the Board of Health waiting because as we know, town departments don't work at the speed of light. So it could take years before something happens with regulations and things. So I don't want to necessarily tie somebody up waiting for that regulation to happen when, you know, it's inevitable that it were happening, but who knows?
Our discussions with the Board of Health and members of the Board of Health is that they are actively...
So, and the other with the, the zoning with the R1, I know at some point it's almost, you know, and, and maybe I'm totally off base with this, but a creeping effect. If we take one area and then we say we shouldn't have it, and then it borders the next area and then it works. So it would in essence spread and pretty much eliminate pools if that's the goal of the town and so be it. But we do have a separation and I know there's always going to be that border and R1 is that border. So everybody on that ROH where the R1 happens, you know, yes, but there's areas outside of, you know, that, that go away from that border that are still R1 that somebody can say, I really want a pool and I don't want to affect anybody and, and I don't want to eliminate that, that person because we're on that threshold there. So what I'm really saying is just writing down notes and I like it in principle as an idea and I, I just think we can narrow it down and, and make it so that it's something that's feasible or practical to pass as opposed to just throwing it out there all or nothing. Because I think when it gets a town meeting, it will be shot down.
Yeah, and just give me one second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There was one thing that John had said earlier too, which I just would want to put into the back of your thinking cap and certainly I want to talk to staff or front of the two. But I thought the thing he said about subdivision plans when they come in, that's, that was a good thought.
Thank you, Barry.
No problem. It was really a good thought. Maybe there's another way to start looking at some of those things through, through different villagers. So again, that, that might be something for us just to, excuse me, keep on the back burner. I'm sorry.
No, no, I wanted to, as you mentioned, beyond town meeting, which I thought was, I was thinking along the lines of this is a seasonal resident issue. You know, 70% of it is me who are paying a lot of bills. When we did those, you know, studies, but what is it?
Surveys?
Surveys. Thank you, sorry. Is that everybody? Is that just voters? Is that everybody?
We sent it to all property owners within those districts within...
On the original ROH one?
On the ROH.
I'm just saying, so that was all, all residents, seasonal or not? All property owners?
All property owners.
Okay, good. All right. It's important. Because that's another thing. When we go to town meeting, we vote to control people that can't vote theoretically, spend their money. So, you know, as I said before, I mean, this isn't, you know, you know, back in the day, everybody went to the beach. It's not like that now. I mean, it's a difference, different. I mean, I'm not trying to say I love swimming pools. Wow. If I had the money, I might put one in, but I don't. It's, 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 I don't want to say the horse is out of the barn. I'm not saying it can't be pulled back in. I'm not saying there's not a way to control more of it. What have been the effects of Matticat? I didn't even know the zoning board. I thought it was us, so whatever, sorry about that. Because when we got that article passed, I thought that was significant to do, you know, like with VR 10 Limited with the second drawing. How, how many permits have come in under a special permit? Do you guys know on the VR?
Well, there's nine pools in VR. I don't know.
Nine?
According to Leslie's, that's, that's from the assessor, assessor data. I don't know. There may be more approvals, but...
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to suggest we move on in the interest of time and if you look like you're dying.
No, I'll be fine. I'll be fine.
Mr. Chairman, if, we're not going to revisit this, I'd like to make two quick comments on the Matticat.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. One is that at the HTC, we're primarily getting complaints from neighbors with respect to the R1 and to some extent the R5 district. As you may or may not know, the HTC is not allowed to make rulings or restrictions on things that aren't visible from a public or traveled way. So pools are one of those things that is typically not something the HTC can address. And what we typically say to people is to refer them to try and make changes to zoning, as occurred in the VR. With respect to the VR, I think we, the HTC's approved two or three in the last year and a half that I've been there. And of course, those go through the ZBA and we try to get the ZBA to weigh in first. And then the only other thing I would, and this I think was really the more important one, I guess that factual information is perhaps helpful and HTC staff can provide much more. But I would suggest that if it goes to a citizens' article with regards to the spas and ground cover as being a consideration, is that anything that's fully enclosed indoors does not then present a nuisance in the lighting issue as much as something that's outdoors. And I think there are some prophylactic uses for the spas that are not necessarily nuisance related and that may be something that would garner some support for that type of an article. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that in the R1 and the R5, I'm just saying as a general comment.
Okay.
So, for what it's worth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
So just, if it's in order, I wanted to just update on a couple of other things here. The topics I'd like to comment about are only three left. Tertiary dwellings in a narrow sense, open space district, your favorite, Mr. Chairman, and registration of rental housing, short-term and long-term. And so those are the things. I don't know what else Fritz has, but I...
I was just going to ask.
I wanted to update too, that I've been with a number of Matticat folks today and I don't think they want to go ahead with extending sewer to Matticat, so I'm not going to talk about that tonight.
One thing I'd say though, I would certainly try to direct them into the ME and EDC as well too. That, that to me, because we've done area plans with them and stuff and I think they could find a...
We've talked about that and that's a good idea too. I think they're... I think there may be interest, but it may be a year from now, or maybe two years from now. Because I talked to some of them previously about whether with the advent of more expensive replacement septic systems with the AAA bond rating now and other things like that, that this might be an advantageous time, but I don't think we want to press anybody who wasn't wanting to do that. So, what I have left is just three. I just want to say that.
Was there anything else for it, Stu? Because you kind of took the lead on things there. Was there anything else you wanted to cover, Eddie?
No.
No, okay, all right. Just wanted to be sure.
Well, the easiest one, I think, is tertiary dwellings. Had some good counsel not to overchange things for fear of unintended consequences, and the idea here is, having seen instances where we have primary, secondary, tertiary, all-in-one structure, it seems that that's more like a mini apartment to some degree, and it would be better to approach that with, as a special permit. I'm not talking about detached tertiary. I'm talking about where it's all-in-one operation, and that having a special permit, as we've talked about before, can give you more opportunity to address things like buffering, or citing on lot, or things of that sort. So, to the degree we're seeing more of that, I know we've talked about the fact that we're still in experimental phase, given that what was passed is only a couple of years old, but it seems like, when I've had to look at these, that we don't have enough of a chance to really work well with the particulars. So, that would be, Andrew, as I understand, as we discussed, that would be a change in the use chart, and I guess a definition of distinguishing this kind of situation from tertiary dwellings, kind of as a general proposition. I talked to some people, too, who are doing garage apartments as an example, so that may be different, I think, compared to having a three, one building with three purpose-built uses. So, that seems like a fairly mild thing, but having seen the instances that we've had come up, it seemed like a good idea to give us more discretion on how to review that. So, that's the idea there.
Mr. Chairman, and one thing, Judith, that your analysis brought out, there are some districts in your footnote that actually tertiary dwellings are not allowed.
Okay, but...
And that's R5 Limited, R10 Limited. It's incorrect in the chart, so we're going to get that fixed.
Okay.
So, anyway.
I did my homework, I won you to...
No, so you were correct, but it brought up the question for us.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, in our discussion, I think that it's fair to say that generally where the most issues that have come up around this have been where there's a duplex.
Thank you.
So, and duplexes in general have, you know, in the first round of the master plan, you know, did bring up some concerns about, because at least here, they're not generally owner-occupied. They tend to be, you know, investors, or, you know, at least that's been the pattern here. So, that, you know, to expand, I mean, definitely, what we talked about is where the three unit, because essentially, it's a triplex-type structure. But maybe to expand that where there's a duplex and a separate building or something that, you know, we have the special permit process, is just a thought.
Yep. Any thoughts?
I don't like any of your ideas.
I think that you're talking about eighteen country, I mean, I grow, whatever. I think that it's definitely, I mean, it comes across as we're making more in the one structure. It's definitely got more scrutiny, but it got more questions. I think that the staff comes back with something for this. I think the main focus is enforcement in the current conditions that we don't have. I think that was brought up a lot, that we don't have so much control over duplex versus when we do these, sort of, we'll call it a triplex, but three kitchens. It gives more enforcement capability than it did previously. You could have more cars or more illegal stuff, whether it's another kitchen that's not accounted for, whatever, in a duplex than you do in the end result of a triplex.
If it's planted in...
That's planted in this. I'm not saying that we don't need to have more. I mean, I think that there's room for some improvement with this. What about basements, Andrew? We had one over there on, which I can't believe that people do that. It's crazy if they have a big lot. There was one over on Heinz, Sturgis Heinz, about a year and a half ago. I was shocked. Like, you got a huge lot, and you're putting it in your basement? That doesn't make sense, but it's allowed. They have to do an awful lot of work to make it legal in a basement. You have to do a lot of fire stuff, double sheet rock. I mean, it's crazy. Would that fit under a concern, or, because there's a lot of code for that already? You're more concerned with the number of people, cars on that site?
Well, I just, I think it's an intensive enough use that there's, as they say, externalities, you know, just how the parking is, if there's sufficient screening, all that kind of stuff. And I guess I would say, I'm thinking about new construction, but also if you're intensifying the existing construction, it would seem to me that would fall under the same idea.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a good idea. It's not precluding people if they want to have, to go ahead with it. The point of the original bylaw, I think, was to try to correct legalities in some places, so they'd still have the opportunity to do that. It would just give us more discretion to guide it, it seems to me.
I think I would look at limiting it to R5, R10.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's already limited, because R5 and R10 are the only two districts that allow duplexes anyway.
Okay.
And remember, there's an overall bedroom cap that applies to R5, R10, and R20 and above. There's seven districts where this is allowed, and R5, R10 are the ones where there's been concerns. I think, I don't think we've had many concerns in larger lots or in separate individual structures. I think the concerns have been the intensity and the situation where maybe the notice provision of the special permit alerts more people, alerts the abutters, that there will be a special permit hearing on the matter. So, the, and again, there's been 29 of them. We don't have a lot of data yet, but I think, again, we've had enough experience to know that where there's been some controversy is around the duplex with the additional unit somewhere.
Anyone built a new one?
What's...
I don't think anyone has built a fresh new triplex under this.
Yeah, well, Housing Nantucket did.
They did?
I mean, it was an old structure, kind of reconstructed.
Okay.
Okay, ready for the next one?
I just...
Is that right?
Just give me a few moments.
You like special permits, so I'm hoping you like that very...
Well, here you go. There's some pros and cons. I agree with you, Andrew, because you really did steal my thunder on the thing with the duplexes, because that seemed to... No, don't worry about it. It's good, actually. Don't worry about it. Excuse me. But I do honestly think that if we're going to do special permit, I'd want to tie it directly to a duplex structure. I mean, this is still premature, I think, a little bit with these. As Andrew had said, there's only 29 that's been done to date so far. I don't want to necessarily discourage them. And when I looked at the data you provided in terms of who's filling in those places, who's living in those places, that, to me, was terribly meaningless. That had a lot of meaning to it. It made sense that, to me, that these were filling what they were meant to fill. And as you pointed out as well, too, it wasn't just the ability to put in a third dwelling unit. It was also meant to do things like make basement apartments, garage apartments, and deal with security issues for that as well, too, which, to me, again, was a good thing in the process. So, if I were going to do special permit for anything, I'd want to just narrow it into that area initially, still continuing to gather data, and begin to see how they work out in that process.
Could you clarify for me?
Yeah.
Are you saying only duplexes with a separate third dwelling unit, or are you saying if you start with a duplex and you put a basement? I'm not quite sure.
I think any time they're going to invoke any type of tertiary dwelling where duplexes are involved, that just automatically is going to flag out a special permit.
So, again, to be sure I understand, if there's a structure and it has one, two, and then a third, in a sense, that's a duplex, right? It's not like for the fire code duplex, or are you thinking about side-by-side, like townhouse duplex? I'm just being, I'm a little unclear what you're describing.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we have specific definitions for duplex, so it wouldn't include a garage apartment situation. It would include, you know, only the duplex, which I think it's over or under, and not one of those other situations. So, and I'm thinking of the examples, so the one that caused some issues on fairgrounds, that was a duplex with a side tertiary structure. So, that would trigger a special permit. Or the duplex with the conversion of the basement, or to start out a new construction, if that's what's being proposed. It's a duplex with an accessory-type dwelling in one structure, that would be a special.
What I'm trying to understand, between what you're saying and what I'm saying, is, I'm picturing if you build a structure that has one, two, three dwellings in it, you're saying you don't want to regulate that now, you only want to regulate if there's a two-dwelling duplex plus a separate?
No, if it's going to be included in the duplex, if they're counting the duplex, because I'm having a real problem tracking what you're saying.
Well, likewise, I'm sorry.
I'm being fuzzy-minded a little bit here at this point. So, if what you're saying is that somehow they're able to evolve a third unit in there and call that as part of the tertiary in the duplex structure?
Right.
Again, I'd want to try, I'd want to trigger a special permit.
Okay, so if it's built as a one, two, three to start with, or if it's a conversion of what's been a two into a three?
Yeah.
Or if it's a two and then a side, so I don't disagree with you at all. I just, I was trying to understand.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure I didn't mishear you, so thank you.
I'm waiting for the suit fit to kick in right now.
Oh, no. Well, that may make it worse.
No, it'll help. It'll help, trust me. So, that would just be my take on it right now.
Is that giving you enough to work with?
Yes. So, that sounds like the board supports that idea. It just needs some more staff development.
Especially when it's one structure.
Right.
You'd still have to adhere to all the regulations, the, you know, 80% for the second. If it was one building, you know, the second apartment would have to be 80% of that, and the tertiary in the basement would still be 650. So, there would be, you know, constraints that enforce itself, including year-round resident, the owner being occupied for tertiary...
That's the way tertiarys are defined.
Yeah. So, it kind of enforces itself, too, but I do like, you know, putting a special permit on that.
So, it sounds like we could start within the board to develop that with staff help and then refine it.
Right.
Yeah, does that...
But what John just talked about, a new structure.
Okay, let me just read to you the definition of duplex. It says, "Structure containing two dwelling units but not including primary dwelling with an accessory dwelling unit, or tertiary dwelling unit contained therein. In R1, both dwellings should be in the same ownership." So, we don't allow a tertiary in R1 anyway, so it's allowed only in the seven main districts, R5, R10, R20, R40, lug 1, 2, 3. So, but the duplex is not, John, what you said is not right. I'm sorry, but...
No, I'm sorry. I'm looking for clarification.
The duplex units can be the exact same size. There was an old rule that, there was some confusion about the interpretation, but they're not counted like a second dwelling. The second dwelling requires the 20% less. The tertiary dwelling has the maximum size of 650. So, and that can exist, again, as this accessory dwelling in, you know, it essentially is a triplex, so it's a, you know, we call it a duplex with an accessory. It's really three units in one structure. Or it can be the duplex with a separate structure. So, it doesn't include, it doesn't include garage apartments, like attached to a single family with a separate structure. That would not, that would not be subject to a special permit. So, again, we'll, now that we've got some direction and we have some time to look at this, we have until roughly December to, you know, develop the final language, so.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I see our swell chairman hanging in here, so...
No, 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 trust me. No, don't read anything more into it. I'm doing fine. I promise I'll let you know.
Okay. You need some water or anything?
No, thank you, though. That's very sweet.
No, sorry. Open space district, a matter of interest that we've touched on before. The idea here is not to try to map an open space district, but simply to define an open space district, and then do what is generally done with rezoning map amendments, which is to work with property owners as to how that might be put on the map. So, I know from our prior discussion, Mr. Chairman, I think you've talked about the wear and tear of the prior history of trying to work on this, and yet you had said you thought it was important. So, I want to just say, I agree with you. I think that's important, and that I understand that some of the conservation entities may be in different places of this. Some may be open to that. Some may feel that it somehow is a deterrent to their donors in some way, but I'm not here to say we're going to make anybody do this. I just think we have places, especially with increasing issues about climate change, erosion in certain places. Some of the conservation groups that would like to preserve and have that on the map. So, I know there can be the devil's details of how you define open space. It's almost like defining where children play for purposes of marijuana dispensaries or something, but it seems like it worth the effort, and so I'd like to try it again.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
Andrew, didn't you have, you know, a consultant working on this at one time, or you went for this?
Well...
Trying to think of when this was. It wasn't that long ago, but...
In 2006, this was part of the warrant articles that were brought forward, and there was, there wasn't an island-wide mapping associated with it, but there was a mapping function. That was tabled, the planning board recommendation at the time was tabled, and then it either was discussed in draft. We couldn't find whether it was actually resubmitted again. We're still trying to figure out if it came back or not. But I believe it did have a mapping component. Now, after it sort of didn't make it, we started a process of rezoning conservation land to the lowest intensity district, depending on its status in the town or country overlay. So, we've done numerous articles where you've seen that, where, you know, in the country overlay district, open space goes to LUG3, and we've expanded that to erosion-prone areas and, you know, land of low value and things like that. So, I think that it's probably, I mean, in our discussion, I think it's a good time to look at this again. We talked about it at the time in relation to the 40B calculation. There's an area calculation that you, land zone for buildings and houses is different than land zone for open space, and there's a percentage there that we're not able to get to, that this is, I think, maybe worth a look. We did dig out the 2006 article and sent that out. It came out fairly late. But I think at this stage, if the board is willing to think about that, I think that's an article that at least should go forward for further discussion. The mapping, as Judith says, the mapping can come later, and there are conservation organizations that don't have the issues. Certainly, public entities like the Land Bank don't have any concerns about that. It's really working through maybe some of the distinct parcels that some of the private organizations may have.
I would just add to that. I think when it's on the... I think when it's on the map is LUG 3, people don't really get it.
Exactly.
Especially if there's permanent restrictions on it, that it's not developable. And since we're moving into the master plan review and everything like that, it really behooves us to be as clear as we can and to let people know that. So, if there are folks who are reticent about doing that and if they really do have plans to develop it, we, we kind of would better know that than not know it. Right now, we don't really have any signifier about that, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with that. I mean, the moving to the lowest density was sort of a fallback. And, and I know you have been a supporter of that all along. You brought it up many times.
And the reason we don't use MMD is because it's not approved, correct?
No, we, we've expanded MMD significantly.
Have you started dealing with that?
But MMD is very specific to certain types of coastal plains.
Okay.
We can't just put MMD on.
Just whatever that's.
Land that doesn't meet that qualification.
So, we need to create a new district and possibly remap some of the LUG 3 into that district.
The proposal, at least, which is, we'd follow a similar path. The proposal in 2006, now that was before we had adopted the chart and other things, but was to group it with MMD. And so, there were two, two special districts discussed. Now, what we would do is probably add it into the chart, add certain definitions. You all would need to discuss the uses and other things that we included the last time. So, but we have a working, we have a working example from, you know, the prior effort.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think.
Is that okay?
That's, well, you know what? It's been 13 years. It's been 13 years when I realized that.
Really? That, oh, really?
2006, yeah, that was back in 2006. So, I think it is time to revisit it at this point. I like the concept because it's a lot simpler. All it does is just establishes the district, period. There's no push for anything. But I think as Andrew identified, I mean, I could see places like Muscatia coming online. I could see whatever Land Bank parcels are coming online. And here's the thing that I've also learned over that time period, which is now, I think, incredibly meaningful, is that it really does begin to shift all the calculations for building a land mass. Now, all of a sudden, I think that, that lofty target that we've been trying to deal with, if we can get some buy-in from the various places, start to change things for our shy list and consequently for, you know, our ability to reach safe harbor as well, too. So, but I, I see this being a really worthy proposal to come back up at this point. And see, because it, it has more than just making sure that, you know, those parcels are dedicated to our open space. It can have an incredibly bigger effect on the.
If it's in order, could I ask?
Yeah.
You mentioned the implications for 40B. Could you go back to that about, just to be sure we all understand that?
Yes, but I can't remember the exact percentage. But it's, let it are, do you know?
It's, no.
Yeah.
I don't think any community, I think one community, the Commonwealth, has reached safe harbor.
Right.
With the land mass calculation.
Right.
It's an odd duck.
It's a tough one. But I think the one that has is a community that has a lot of open land. I think either water protection land for the Quavon or something like that.
Wetlands doesn't take, comes out as well.
Yeah.
Some coastal areas.
Right.
It's a small percentage.
Right, it's like, I can't remember the percentage.
0.5, 1, 1 and 1/2.
Something like that. So, you, you basically take all your land where it's not developable and it's not zoned for houses and structures. And you back out of that and then you, you total the land that is zoned or that is already developed. And then it's a percentage of that. If, if a percentage of your land is dedicated to shy list housing, so, for example, all of the Richmond property, 6FG, if it gets built, all that would be added up and it equals the, I think it's half percent, I think. Then that's another way to reach safe harbor. So.
So, I think that would be of interest to the community, too.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, it'll be a slow process. I don't think it's just going to be click, click, click. But at least this begins to lay some significant groundwork toward it.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, that was part of the motivation to look at that as well.
Exactly.
So.
Okay, last, last one. Andrew, and maybe Leslie, too, said maybe this is not one for, for us, but might be better for a citizen article than that may be. But here's the idea. I think all of you know that the legislature last, this current session that is about to end had gotten close to passing legislation that would create a tax on short-term rentals and Airbnb. And that may come back. But the idea here is something significantly less impactful now. Would call for a registration system so that we have a better idea about what units are out there and are being rented. I think my term here, short-term rental housing, was from the legislation. But my idea would be both year-round and short-term of more than two weeks. The idea being that if there's a registration process, some places have a self-assessment that the landowner can do. Others don't do that. But that there would be, if you want a rent, that you would apply for a rental certificate. There then would be some inspection to be sure you're in compliance with the various safety requirements, occupancy rules. You'd have to list how many bedrooms and that kind of thing. The fee would be a fairly modest fee of something like $100 per bedroom or something like that. But what it would allow us to do would be to have a funding source for enforcement to see that we're in compliance. It would also give us a better idea about what actually is being rented. I think that right now, we're kind of operating a bit on, I'm, I'm thinking bubble gum and dental floss or, you know, it's some, some picture like that, that we don't really have enough information about this or about conditions and that kind of thing. It could also be, as I've been talking to people around about, about the kind of pressure, growth pressures we're having. If you had some kind of a setup like this in place, it would allow us to see if the legislature does pass, to be better positioned to move ahead with that, to then take advantage of what would be tax revenues coming from that that can be used for infrastructure or to some degree for affordable housing. I don't know how that's going to change in the year ahead. So, it would kind of give us a preparatory step that would be a simpler step. And in addition, at some point, if we were really concerned about growth pressure, that we could grant other people who already have certified, approved, safe housing, whatever, that they'd get the first rental permits down the road. So, this may seem to be startling or whatever, but there's a lot of places that have done something similar. Many of them have to do with concern for some tenants. They can't reach the landlord if, if there's some kind of an emergency. That, I don't know to what degree that's applicable here because I'm sure many people use Realtors as their representatives. But it, it really, I talked to Roberto about this last week and he said there's even software that's available. If they had a funding source, that they could identify what Airbnb and the various other providers have and that they could then really have a better way to kind of keep track of what's being rented. I talked to somebody this afternoon who said that, in his opinion, maybe Airbnb, I'm thinking of Arby's, Arby's.
Sorry.
Sorry. Airbnb, that they may have an incentive to be sure that everything looks good because they're renting online and they have people commenting on how great their facilities are. But it seems to me you'd have to do this consistently across everybody affected. But I personally think that's a good idea. And I think, to my mind, it does fall within the arena of land use and it could well come within our jurisdiction or NPEDC. I had the sense from Roberto that he thought it was a good idea and that if we were to move ahead with it, or if there was a citizen petition, that he would talk to the health board about it and that if there were that kind of a funding stream, that since they're in the business of doing inspections anyway, that that would really help them to have a structure by which to do it. So, I'd be delighted if the Planning Board thought they wanted to help sponsor this. If not, I'm probably going to try to move this ahead as a citizen petition. But I just want you all to have a chance to talk about it. Nat looks like he has heartburn.
No, there's, no, I, there's been a lot of stabs at this type stuff, not just this one, but the rental tax. It's gone off years, never passed yet, but it's getting closer. So, I'm not sure of planning. I think this is, I don't know what falls, what this falls under as far as a board or whether it's a selectman issue, a select board issue, administration issue. Not sure. I mean, but we get sort of dragged in to, especially in the last few years because we're peaking at the moment, like as if it's never happened before, and it has. But we're getting dragged into a lot of the discussion. So, I see why it's a good, you know, good place to talk about it. And it makes sense to talk about it here. But is that because of a lot of the perception that the Planning Board is, you know, creating too much or allow, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, this is something that has the issue, Airbnb is new, but as far as the rental tax and different things like that, it's been coming up for a long time. It's not new. So, I don't know what it means. I'm just, I'm not sure it's a Planning Board type of article.
Do you think it's an NPEDC?
Well, we don't sponsor articles. We do comment, though, right?
No, we, NPEDC has in the past sponsored art. Well, remember, after the, it's all, the warrant is controlled by the Board of Selectmen after the, the citizen deadline passes.
Correct.
So, and they don't automatically put articles in. They, they have discretion.
Yeah.
So, but the NPEDC can and has sponsored articles in the past. But it, it doesn't go into the warrant unless the selectmen allow it. Mr. Chairman, could I, just, just one thing to think about a little bit is, you know, Airbnb has certainly come up in a lot of planning circles.
Sure.
There's consultants that are sort of hawking the ability to get you numbers and things like that. We've, I've got one that we met in San Francisco that keeps saying, you know.
Give me free.
Wants a contract, yeah.
In the July and I'll show you what I can do, right?
Right. I mean, we do have a couple bylaw, I mean, zoning terms. We have transient residential facilities, which are hotel, rooming, lodge, and guest houses. And we also have a section on time-sharing or time interval ownership. Because, again, that was sort of a thing at the time, you know, which maybe.
Come and gone.
Come and gone, right. But maybe emerged into this new thing. So, it is, it is dealt with in zoning codes in other communities. Again, it's what the community, you know, how they decide to deal with it. We haven't had a whole lot of discussion on that. I mean, we've had a whole lot of articles about the rent, the rental tax over the years, which have always created a lot of conversation. And they have not passed, but the margin has gotten, you know, certainly got smaller over time. So, something to think about on that is that, you know, and maybe it's something you want to continue to look at. I mean, if you're, maybe, I mean, we probably don't have enough solid here for, for you all to, to consider tonight. But if you want us to look at a possible article, we can.
Well, and just for what it's worth, I, I really believe in this. I think it's important and I'm not kidding you if you think you've got that. So, if I get the requisite number of signatories, then you'll have a chance to give an opinion on it and you could propose changes to it or something like that, too. So, if you're interested, I think you'd have a chance to see it again. I, I don't know if you, would you say whatever, whether it's zoning or not, would it come in for comment here, in your opinion, if there's a citizen article?
Zoning does not, I mean, zoning comes here for a recommendation to town meeting. But non-zoning articles, we typically review at the NPEDC.
Okay.
We have a process where we consider whether the articles are of planning concern and then we transmit our opinions to the finance committee who issues the final report on them. So.
Is there a way, Andrew, to incorporate the rental tax, some of the provisions in that, into the Airbnb? Because one of the issues that has come up over the years when that article keeps coming in is that the rooming houses are paying.
Right.
That no one else pays. I mean, that's basically the gist of it.
Yep.
But they are paying into the general fund. I mean, that, remember the, the Grant Sanders, I don't mind paying another 10 cents for a hamburger comment. It is, you know what I mean?
That was a while back.
It might have been 50 cents. But when we start projecting where money needs to go and paying for this and paying for that, that's when, if we, if we could stick with something that sort of keeps it on sort of the same track as the rental tax and ties maybe some of this into it, but without getting into, well, we want the money to go to this or we want the money to go to that. That might not, that might be where the wheels come off a little bit.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
The, I think here, what Roberto said is he thought it would be good to have them set the amount according to their general fee schedule. And I think for this, the costs really are about enforcement and you probably want to set it so it dovetails with those costs. The legislation, which may take a different shape. I read something from a Realtor in the last few days, wondering whether it might even get handled before the end of the year, but I'm not counting on that. Specifically calls for use of funds for infrastructure and for affordable housing. Now, whether that would change in the future, I don't know. But another thing related to affordable housing that's interesting is that some people might say if there's a tax on seasonal rentals, like two weeks, beyond two weeks in the summer, that that may change the calculation for people about whether they want to rent year-round compared to rent for the summer. So, it, it may well help with year-round affordable housing, depending on how that's set. And I don't know ultimately how, I can't remember, maybe you do what was in it. I don't think they said, if there was a percent in terms of the percent of taxation, but I never saw a kind of a dollar figure about how that would translate if it applied here. I think nobody, at least I never saw that. So, I was happy to see it because I know we keep working on the local taxation idea to try to deal with affordable housing. But this one seems to me to be very logical. There's a real fit there, a connection, because in effect.
No, it does.
If you're, if you're pulling housing out of year-round market to rent it in the summer, then there's an adverse effect on the year-round population. So, you really should be doing something to even that up. And that, and also the infrastructure so that if you've got a summer population that's affecting the transportation, bike paths, sewer lines, other things like that, that to me makes some sense. So, I don't know what, have you heard any more projections about where it'll go? It was close. It passed both houses. Then the governor said he wanted an exception for two weeks of rental, which I think makes some sense because that's a real small amount that somebody might do without having really be a displacement broadly. But. So, you, you think this is a good idea, stupid idea?
No, I think it has some really good, a good basis. And I'm just curious about enforcement, how to collect and things. And one, something that I was unaware of at our last NP ECD or EDC meeting, about Uber. I didn't know that Uber was charged a certain fee.
Yeah, neither.
At the end of the year, they give a big check to. So at the end of the year, they give a big check to the town in Nantucket and something like Airbnb and also HomeAway and Vacation. By Homer, you know, that would be a tax that
Well, and that's been an issue in other places. You should also know, you probably do, that places like San Francisco, New York City, others have found that Airbnb rentals, especially if they're, if they're structured on by investors, they really are losing affordable housing because people are pulling out what might have been standard rentals and using them that way. And so there's been a growing number of places that have said Airbnb, I know San Francisco did this, you have to give us data about what, you know, what your take is so that we get some tax revenue off of this so we can work on affordable housing. And I think Airbnb doesn't give them names and phone numbers of who's renting, but they do, there's both money and there's some more accountability on that. I think right now, and Andrew Leslie would know better, but I think now towns are currently preempted from imposing a tax in Massachusetts. Am I right on that? So we can't haul off and impose our own tax, but this really sets the stage so at least we know where the units are and if they can get software that helps them track it, then it'll make it a whole lot easier to impose the tax whenever that might be possible, once legislature would act on it.
So just, just to summarize, I think that what we've talked about here is really like getting the administrative structure set up, not necessarily zoning at this point. I think zoning might be something that follows, but so I don't, I just want to be clear on what we're expected to do and I don't see a big role for us in developing the article. I certainly see a role for you all supporting it if, you know, as it moves along, so. But I think that the, it sounds like from your discussion with Board of Health, that it seems like the regulations might live there or live with finance or something?
I haven't gotten that close yet. I haven't asked, I would think that, I think of it as a general bylaw, not a, not a land use like planning bylaw, but something to authorize that and that the regulatory structure would be under the Board of Health and the enforcement would be under the Board of Health.
So I have to, I think I'd concur with Andrew. I don't see this necessarily being on his, on the, the planning board level, but I like the idea and the concepts that you're proposing at this point. I would probably strongly encourage you to do this as a citizens' one article because you'll have control of the ball still and I think that's important because ultimately this is going to have to pass through the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen. And if you were to leave it to the NP and EDC to do it as a Board of Selectmen sponsored article, it can be, this can be taken apart into pieces and that's just something you'll learn through the CPC.
That's good advice.
Where I think you will retain control of that and to me, that's probably a little bit more important. I think what will be important, too, is to, when you bring this through, of course, get Board of Health support, get the NP and EDC support. I probably even dare say to you, since there's funding involved with the process, you're going to want to determine what to do with that revenue and I would spell that out.
Right.
Just as suggestive ideas, because otherwise it could go into general fund.
Right.
But I think if you do things like data collection, compliance and staffing to do that, that's a good fundamental start, you know?
Could I follow on that just to, and this is for Andrew Leslie, too. I've been known to draft something now to get in my life, but I would like to, both it's a courtesy and respectful thing to run anything I'm writing. I think Fritz and I are probably going to continue on the swimming pool beach front, as it were, and I wouldn't want to do something poorly technically, so is it fair to say I could speak to Andrew Leslie about that and not honk off all of my beloved friends here?
The doors are open.
Okay.
I mean, they'll, I think they'll certainly let you know whether they're in the ballpark.
Well, I just don't want to, I, I hope you see, I've really been working very hard to try to bring things to all of us and I understand there's disagreements, but
We may need a little town council advice on this, too.
Well, I'm sure so, so I, I know that and I've got to get going on that this week probably because it's, the time's coming. But I just appreciate to all of you the chance to talk about it tonight and I just wanted to thank you for all your views, one way or the other, because I think these are important things we do. It's sometimes the urgent overtakes the important and I think some of the stuff is kind of the big picture stuff. We also, when we met, Andrew, Leslie and I talked about sometimes you want to try trial balloons, I think was what you said to, as we move forward with the master planning and things like that, to see, for example, I think if there's a better way to inventory what the rental deal is that's going to help us be more alert to how we manage some of the growth issues and safety issues and things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you all for your patience.
So I'm probably just going to follow up with you at this point. I mean, for whatever's worth, I mean, I think anyone sitting here would be willing to give you their two cents as well, too, in terms of just even the review process.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're all kind of in the game of doing it and I'm just, I
I'm going to say, you and me, babe, we're going to get this open space set. You're going to hear from me, okay?
No, but I do mean that in all sincerity, if, you know, if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to sit down and talk about it, I'm happy to do that with you. Because again, like you said, there are times where you have to kind of do these trial basis things to see where they're going to take off to at this point. And I think what you hear are very different voices of experience with navigating the waters to get there as well, too.
I think it's good for all of us to, it's been very interesting because I've been trying to do outreach with different people and get their ideas in and just to remind people now if they're not thinking about it, that there's this deadline coming. So if you want to come, it seems far away, April, you know, many northeasters between now and then, but I think that's good for our process generally, that people know that we're interested in their thinking and everything like that. So if anybody has ideas of who else I should talk to, I'm eager to hear that, too.
Yeah. I probably just, do you have something, I just want to close.
I want to ask staff on something, if they think about, I'm sort of looking at this, Andrew, as a little bit of the hot issue. There are other communities doing, looking at this. I mean, there's got to be, right?
Airbnb?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This whole thing, this isn't just here. So my, I mean, I know that we're not allowed to just, you know, get the meat running with town council, or do we feel like it? So I'm just wondering if staff can find out information with other towns that are similar to us. So if we, if you do go forward with this article that we're clean, when I, something, whatever's happening at the state level, knowing all these answers is important with this. This isn't just, you know, just anything. This is something that's not isolated to Nantucket, especially on the Cape.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment? So this may be helpful, especially you're picking up as a citizens' article, but one avenue of approach is where Town Admin has been involved at municipal level and legislating with our state legislators.
Yeah.
A work group that's discussing this stall legislation so that when it was just unloaded on the communities, they were prepared. So along that vein, in terms of developing how it might, your article might dovetail with what eventually will be passed, that may be a helpful avenue.
That's a good point. Are you, are you on the work group?
I can facilitate.
There you go.
No, I'm not on the work group.
Are you on the work group?
I'm not.
Okay, well
But that was, that's what I was trying to say. That's a good way to receive that.
So really two things. Don't let town council off the hook too easily because they do have to help citizens craft articles.
They need the income, too, I'm sure.
Yeah, they, you can correct me if I'm wrong here at any point, but
Well, I just want to be clear on that because they did have a session here
Okay.
Already.
All right.
On the 18th and 19th.
Yep.
They already, they did.
So they've done due diligence, so I'm sorry.
It's, that's a process that the town manager, it's not, it's not us that run that, but
No, I know that.
The town manager, we, you do need approval to go to them through the town manager. So it's just something to be aware of and we can
So to just follow on with that, so if, just hypothetically, if I have this drafted by the middle of the week or end of the week, who would I send to, to request that preliminary review be done by council?
You, you could request that directly to the town manager.
Okay.
If the board is supportive of that, we can certainly weigh in on that and say that, you know, we at least want to support that idea.
Is that okay?
I don't see anyone saying no.
Okay, well, I've, I've been researching all this, too, so I'd probably do a side memo with kind of, here's something, what do you think about that, but here's my reasoning. So I'm not going to, I know I'm not town council, but I just want to give anybody who's reviewing it a head start of what I've already covered.
I mean, somebody else could be working on it, so I just don't see any reason why you can't do it.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because this is something, as I said, this isn't, this isn't new.
When
This is just a new piece of something that's been worked on.
And I do think when it comes to drafting these articles, to remember to be broad in your, because if it's too, if you decided like, if it's an article that says to adopt a program, to adopt a fee schedule, to adopt a, those tend to be better because then you can put the meat onto the, the overall outline through the FinCom recommendation afterwards. If you make too many decisions ahead of time, it's hard to, because then you have a scope issue, then again, that's
You can't broaden, you can only narrow it.
Right, right, so.
So, no, this has been good. The only thing I'm going to probably say is that I'm just going to encourage us as we come into next year at this point, we probably should be having these discussions a lot earlier. Staff does a really good job about advancing their proposals around August or so, just to kind of get it out on the table. And I think if we can do that next year, it'll give us a lot more time to be a little bit meaningful in terms of really being able to spend some good quality time on some of this stuff as well, too. So I'd just like to at least put that on to the radar for as we come into next year because, you know, especially right now, too, we're also getting into probably one of the busiest times of the year with people starting to focus on getting out of here, holidays coming up and all that good stuff, too. So just my two cents, but thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Is there anything from the public at this stage, sir?
Sure. I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. One is, can you, or maybe the staff, just say which articles the planning board is going to work on and which ones are going to be citizens based on the discussion tonight or on this or somewhere?
Yep, there is, go ahead. I think you, do you have a feel for it or do you need to kind of set back for a day?
Well, let's, I mean, I think that the, the pool article, I think that is going to be, you're going to continue on as citizen.
It'll be a citizen, right.
Okay. The article about the ground cover, the ground cover and that, I think that's something we agreed to look at either through regulation or bylaw.
That's the first one.
Yeah, the first one.
The polls are on the other one. The first issue we talked about?
Realize something is on the real law now.
The one about
We're going to hear one person at a time. That's okay.
I think that we agreed to look at the rear, what you brought up is rear lot.
Yes, okay.
Which is really, it's a ground cover issue, but
Yeah, okay.
So that we would continue to look at that to either A, develop a change to the zoning bylaw, or B, to adjust our own practice, one or the other, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay. The open space, there seemed to be support for that to move forward. The tertiary, there seemed to be support to develop something, change in the bylaw for special permit.
Yep.
The Airbnb, there's general support for the legal review, but that that is going to not involve zoning, it will be
Citizens.
A citizens and it will likely be a general bylaw.
Yeah.
And not, not involve zoning. Is that right?
Correct.
Did I miss anything?
Oh.
So, and my second question is, is I'm wondering if the board is willing to take any, consider any public recommendations for planning board articles?
That'll be coming up.
Is that on the 15th?
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I, you know the schedule better than I do.
I mean, my only concern is that the citizen articles are due on the 19th.
Right, but these won't be citizen articles.
I think he's asking
I'm fuzzy with you right now, I'm so sorry.
If the planning board is willing to consider any citizen recommendations for planning board articles?
Yes, and that's, that's, would be an item on the 15th and I mean, it's been a rolling thing anyway, so anybody that has ideas that wants to submit them, I mean, the 15th would be your last chance if you want to pursue a citizen effort, but after the 15th, you can still bring ideas in, you know, so the December meeting is the end, though. The December, our December meeting is the last chance to get, to get those kind of concepts forward, so.
Does that help, Steve? It does, so the planning board meeting on the 15th is a Thursday and the 19th is a Monday, so basically it's nearly too late at that point.
It's only 10 signatures.
Yeah, I mean, getting a citizen article is, is not that hard.
And you may, just to clarify, can't remember if you were at the last meeting when we talked about Fritz's
Oh, the checklist.
Checklist ground rules, do you know what we're talking about, Steve? Do you want to explain it or?
I, you know what, let's have a conversation off the line.
Sure.
Can I just say, I posted the, the citizen piece on the website.
Yeah, catch up to them tomorrow.
Okay.
It's basically kind of what things should we look at when we're reviewing citizen articles that are pure citizen articles and what things citizens wanting us to review citizen articles should think about, like come to the meeting where they're being discussed and things like, like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was quite involved with this swimming pool special permit for VR and have been to several of the CBA special permit discussions and I had some anecdotal feedback from that which could point to some additions in your citizens' article.
We'd be glad to check on that.
And do I just email those to you?
Yeah, or say, come meet with me and have coffee, whatever you prefer.
All right. They are anecdotal, but they are real. And I don't know how swimming pools are called by this existing town light and mirrors.
Oh, you mean the town bylaws?
The town bylaw.
That's kind of a citizen.
Which are quite
Leslie, you were the light, what was it called? Light commissioner?
Enforcement officer, which I'm very happy to not be at the moment.
Has that ever come up? What pool stuff?
The Leo.
People's little playground?
Exactly.
All right, let's
Just curious.
When, I did not investigate
I'm sorry, hold on, are you listening?
Long hand, I'm asking her to answer her point.
Okay, that's
Yeah.
I will say generally the exterior lighting bylaw could use some improvement.
And the other aspect that we're noticing with pools is when you have a pool, not only do you want lighting on it, but you want outdoor speakers and outdoor speakers are
In music.
Bylaw is not silent on that, but
No, no.
On outdoor speakers, but as mentioned, pools. And so I don't know how that happens.
Yeah, I just want to be a little careful because we're starting to drift into that public testimony phase again with things, so.
Everybody's had to move to things now.
We can talk about that. And maybe if there's ideas, like we could come back and revisit the noise bylaws at a point, right, couldn't we, because that's come up several different times in different contexts.
Yep. Anything else?
Just remember to book tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We could do it already.
I have not.